The San Francisco Chronicle app for iPad provides news exclusives and interactive content to Bay Area users who can keep their fingers on the local pulse and immerse themselves in photos, videos, and other multimedia presentations. Details at sfgate.com/iPad.
Lots of us are sick or hurt. We have four times as many emotional problems as other kids.
I'll have to move over and over again.
I'm twice as likely to drop out of high school.
There's a 50/50 chance of ending up homeless.
Not everyone can be a foster parent, but anyone can help a foster child.
In California's fields, things are changing. Crops are less plentiful.
We're seeing two-thirds of a reduction in volume.
Insects are more abundant.
I did end up losing one field.
Water, already scarce, is now too salty to sustain crops.
If you don't have enough quality water to farm, then there's limits to what we can do with genetics.
Climate change pushes California growers to new limits. Heat and Harvest, a special report Friday night at 7:30. You're watching community-supported television, KQRD.
There are stories that need to get out.
You rescue girls from brothels? How does that work?
The real story are the people who rise above this incredible cruelty.
Do you actually see any girls that young go with him into the house?
Yeah.
He must stop, because he can't stop.
Omni's incredible. Now I have absolutely no excuse.
The role and rights of women and girls is the unfinished business of the 21st century.
Meeting to order of the Capitola City Council, regular meeting for September 27th. Are the microphones on? Can you hear them out there? Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Norton?
Here.
Councilmember Nichol?
Here.
Councilmember Story?
Here.
Mayor Terminy?
Here.
Would you all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening is the presentation of Green Building Awards to TJ and Connie Welsh and Duncan and Judith Skolan. Would you all step up here? I know we have TJ and...oh, great. You guys didn't make it, but that's okay. One of you, bring your front center, and I think I even have a microphone there. Duncan?
Yes.
It's for you, and that's your camera.
I heard there.
Say hi to everybody.
Hi, Cameron, okay.
That's your camera, and the City Green Building Awards, the City of Capitola hereby recognizing and commends Duncan and Judith Skolan for their efforts towards building a better environment for the citizens of Capitola by constructing their home located at 5040 Garnet Street, Capitola pursuant to the city's green building program. Thank you very much. Well done. I know it was extra expense, and I know it was extra effort, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we will have your green starfish for you in the following week. You will get that to put up on your house if you like.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Is it John Amy? John Amy, our contractor? John? You know me. I do. And I also know you made a good choice, and I know the house is well done. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
TJ and Connie, come on in. This is your mark. And TJ and Connie, for your efforts in building your green home at 410 Escalona Drive pursuant to the City of Capitola's green building program, I present you this, and your green starfish is on the way. Thank you both. Thanks, TJ. Okay, we have a report on closed session.
Is there a reason I can't hear the microphone? Yes, thank you, Mayor. Closed session began at approximately 6 o'clock. All members were present except for Councilmember Harland, who was absent. The councilmembers received an update on all of the anticipated litigation under Government Code Section 549569.9, but took no reportable action. And under existing litigation, there were no updates to provide to council, and closed session ended at approximately 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, we'll move on to public comments. Anyone who would like to address the council on items that are not on this evening's agenda, please step forward. Anna Marie, I hope you're going to tell us about Engaging the Bystander. Very good. Step right up. Well, I came tonight to say thank you, because Engaging the Bystander is a workshop. It's free to men and women over 18. And it's a two-hour workshop that talks to people about what to do and especially not what not to do when they witness something bad happening. And this will be held at Jade Street Park this Saturday from 1 to 3 in the afternoon. And it is being hosted by the City of Capitola and the Commission for the Prevention of Violence Against Women. Very good. And thank you for organizing that. You've done a lot of work, and we all appreciate it. And I also wanted to say that it did come out in the recent edition of the Capitola Recreation Catalog. And I'm very proud to announce that also in this catalog, we are announcing the first Women's Self-Defense Course in Capitola on page 11. And that will get started in December. It's a two-day course, six hours, and that will be on December 3rd and 10th. And that's the first one, and we hope to be offering more in the future. Thank you very much. We are still looking for grants and sponsors so that we can offer this for a longer period of time. Perfect. Well done. Thank you. I see the folks from Second Harvest are here. Always great to see you.
Good evening, members of the council. We're here just today to...September is Hunger Action Month, the whole month. Everybody across the United States is raising awareness about hunger in their communities, and that's what Second Harvest is doing throughout this month. And just all this month, we've been collecting stories of people that are going through struggles of hunger. And just...we just wanted to share with the council some stories of people, what they're going through. So I'm just going to go ahead and read some of the plates, some of the testimonies of people that write on these plates. And the campaign is called Empty Plates Campaign, and it's pretty much raising awareness. Hunger Action Month is also identified by the orange ribbon or anything orange, so you know, you guys are more than welcome to wear orange throughout this month, which is a few days left. So you know, a member of the community wrote in this plate, "This plate looks better full. It's not very pleasant to be hungry." We had somebody else writing, "Food is life; hunger is hell." We have a little kid writing a picture, and on the side, he wrote, "He's sad because he's not had food." And all I...all this is is orange. Quotemos. Somebody else wrote some pictures, you know, stressed out because they're hungry. I mean, a lot of people, that's pretty much what they're going through. They really feel stressed out. Somebody else just wrote, "I have no family to turn to, no credit card to use in an emergency, but I know my kids won't go hungry thanks to you guys, thanks to everybody that works on giving out food, and thanks to the city to give us all the support that you guys give us every year." There's thousands of stories. I mean, more plates there. There's about a couple of thousand stories on those plates, and pretty much all of them, you know, are pretty much the same with the same message. So we just wanted to come in and just share with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate the work that Second Harvest does. And it should be noted that we grow more food in this country than every man, woman, and child can eat, and yet, there are still many, many, many people who go hungry. And that's just uncalled for. Yes, thank you. I thank the city council for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Bob Cadwelliter. I'm associated with Second Harvest Food Bank, but I'm here representing the Central Coast Hunger Action Coalition, which is an organization which has been raised recently. The core are the three food banks, Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Benito. But also, we have a variety of organizations, everything from United Way to United Farmworkers, who have joined in so that we can combine our efforts, not only to end hunger, but to bring more nutrition to...and address the needs of children's programs in our communities, also the families. And my favorite subject, which is the senior citizens, which sometimes are very hard to reach in the community because of their pride, and they're trying to live on a fixed income which no longer makes ends meet. And when I was at the USDA giveaway up in Ben Lomond last week, I talked to a woman who typified some of the plight which we're trying to address, which is that she could either buy the medication she was on or buy food, and so she was thankful to get the food. And we need to address situations of that type. So I'm here just to announce the beginning of the Central Coast Hunger Action Coalition, and any support you can give, moral support especially. I'm not here asking for money. Thank you very much. Thank you. Hello.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Margaret Kinsler, and I'm here as a representative of the CVRA tonight. For those of you who would like to know more about the CVRA, we do have a website, capitolascvra.com. And also, we'll be sending out a questionnaire for the three city council candidates to answer, and sending those responses to our 250 members. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Sandy?
I see that.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I wanted to address something. I applied for a vacancy on the Finance Advisory Committee, as did two other apparently qualified Capitola residents. And we all met this August 17 filing deadline, and I was disappointed that none of us passed the litmus test for appointment or selection. And it is no secret that I oppose Measure O, the sales tax increase in Capitola. And I'm not sure whether the other people who had applied were for it or against it, but it's my understanding that they have now withdrawn their application, and I think that's unfortunate. I did not withdraw mine. And I helped write the ballot arguments against Measure O. And I didn't have any problems finding neighbors who wanted to sign on with me as co-authors of the arguments and who wanted to join me in saying no on Measure O. And I wish that I could convince somebody on the council to change their position. I know that all of you support it, but that would be a good thing, I think, if at least one of you said, "The city takes enough of our money." And I also want to take this opportunity to address our fellow Capitola residents who might be at home tonight watching, because probably if they're watching, they care about what goes on in the city. And I don't want them to be fooled again. The council has written an argument and said that want people to believe that somebody else is going to pay 83% of the sales tax. And I want them to know that if they use gasoline, soap, toothpaste, and toilet paper, and many other items, they're going to pay 100% of that sales tax. And all these seniors that this gentleman is looking out for who are living on fixed incomes are going to be touched by this sales tax. And I would like to say, if you would like to join me, you know, we don't have a big budget like the city does to finance a study that says, "You're either spending our money good or you aren't." We have to take the time and go through it. So I'd like to ask the people at home who might be interested to join me in saying no. I'd like to plug a local business. It's called Sign Wave. It's owned by Chris Kirby. She'll be glad to make you a shirt, a nice sign. All of them are less than 20 bucks. She'll make you a smaller sign for less than that. Just call her up, and I hope that I can get a lot of people interested in helping me.
Thank you, Sandy. And can I get a yes-on-measure-o shirt for less than 20 bucks?
Yes.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Just spell some.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ed Botorff, welcome.
Hi, Ed Botorff. I want to thank the city council for placing Measure O on the ballot. For years, residents have been asking you to get something done for them. Now you are giving them the opportunity to help make those things happen. Our country, our city, and families that live in this town all try to live within a budget. For most, it is a constant struggle. A recently released benchmark study compares Capitola to other cities. Page one of that document states it's very difficult to make comparisons between cities. Each one is unique. One resounding phrase that people used in all the General Plan Committee forums I attended was how they felt Capitola was a quaint, unique, and charismatic town. I agree. We are unique. Let's appreciate what the benchmark study showed. We are measuring up to other cities. In fact, in certain areas, we are doing better than average. It is always good to take a look in the mirror occasionally, even if just for the sake of ensuring that we are on the right track. Let's not be quick to point the finger as to why some cities are doing better in other areas. I doubt that a lot of comparison cities have been spending thousands of dollars for attorney fees to fight for rent control. Do they have a 140-year-old wooden pier that constantly requires money and repairs to keep open? And did they have a devastating flood that, due to a pipe failure, not only wasn't reimbursed by the insurance carrier, but drained all the reserve funds in order to make the repairs? I could go on, but the reason for the quarter percent sales tax increase is to put money back into the general fund for Capitola. The federal government, the state, and the county get none of the money. The money we collect only goes for our town. There are at least four tax initiatives on the ballot this year that will be asking for taxpayers' money. The state would have you pay an additional quarter percent sales tax, and it's likely you will see very little of that money. Some say that the city in the past has not spent the money wisely, and that is in the past, and it's time to move forward. And let's commit to making positive decisions. People come to these council chambers constantly and to the General Plan Committee forums with their huge wish lists. They're asking for dog parks, state parks, soccer fields, community centers on the beach, donations for their favorite charity, and even a new Stockton Street Bridge. The asking list goes on and on. The truth is, if you want things to happen in this town, we all need to share in the financial responsibility and help Capitola move forward. It's a small price to pay when you consider that every taxable $1,000 you spend in Capitola will personally cost you $25 more with the quarter percent increase. Overall, the city will collect approximately $3.6 million in four years, but of that amount, the citizens of Capitola will only contribute $900,000. That means $2.7 million will come from people outside of our city. Consider this: When gas prices rise arbitrarily, we have no say. We sometimes pay an additional $25 each month, and we see nothing from it. A yes-on-measure-o makes good sense and is good for Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council on items not on this evening's agenda? If not, council comments? Sam?
I have nothing to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Kirby?
Nothing.
Kirby, what went on at the Criminal Justice Council meeting? Anything new going on?
The Criminal Justice Council meeting is primarily focused on gang activities in Santa Cruz County, and we received reports from various task force groups about progress that's being made in that area, trying to analyze the cause, why people join gangs, when they join gangs, what can be done about it, what percentage of the money that's being spent on the problem is being spent in incarceration, what percentage is being spent in prevention, and so forth. And what it all boils down to is that people seem to make their choice about whether to go down a gang path or some other peer group path between the ages of five and 10. And we, as a society, don't spend very much money on that age group. We spend most of our money trying to solve the problem after it has surfaced, rather than trying to stop the problem from incubating and evolving. And the task force is looking at trying to stop the problem in the future of added source through education programs of that very vulnerable and influential group, that five-to-10-year-old group. And hopefully, it's a lot cheaper to spend money on education than it is on apprehension and incarceration.
Thank you. Dennis?
Nothing.
I have a couple of items. On October 3, the Capitola SoCal Patch will host the public showing of the presidential debates at the Britannia Arms, which may be a bar, may be a very good place to watch the presidential debate. And it'll start at 5 o'clock. The Patch is hosting with hors d'oeuvres, and it's a no-host bar, so go and take a look at it. People are always asking me how they can get involved. There's a great opportunity for volunteerism, and that is with the Suicide Prevention Service. They're looking for operators. Training begins Tuesday, October 16. For more information, 459-9373, and perhaps we can put that up on the scroll. And we will move on to board commission committees and appointments, and I don't believe we have anything at this time. So we'll go on to the consent calendar, usually taken as a single vote. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, or would anyone like to pull an item? So move.
Second. I have one question on the check register.
Yes.
Thank you. Could I do that right now?
Absolutely.
Lisa?
We have a check that went to Pacific Waste Consulting Group, and I think we discussed this a little bit in the last agenda where we had a payment to them. Is there any way that we can do this study ourselves?
You know, I tried, actually, a couple of years ago, because I thought, "Why am I paying for this?" But it's actually a pretty lengthy report that you have to prepare for the state, and then you have to be prepared to go there and defend it if you need to. And at one...actually, twice, they've gone up and represented us at the Cal recycle hearings, when they actually read them, go through them all, and I just wasn't prepared to do that. But it is quite a lengthy study, and like I said, you have to go out and do some waste audits, which I am not prepared to go dumpster diving, basically. And you go through, you see what's in the trash to determine some of what's recycled and not recycled. And you get the tenage information from the county...I'm sorry, yeah, from green waste, and you have to analyze it and, again, prepare the reports. If I really...if I did have more time after all these years, I probably could do it, but I don't think I have the time to prepare the reports every year.
Aren't we operating somewhere around 65% recovery right now?
We are at...I want to say we're at 67, and by a couple of years, we have to be at 75%.
We have to be...so we have to increase it to 75?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, is this...what is our yearly bill to them that we're paying now?
I think our total contract amount is 5,500. I can't recall, but it's right around 5,000. They also do other little bit of work for me.
Wait, this is the second $3,000 check we've seen.
Yeah, we saw one last month, too.
Maybe it's a total of six, because they do another assignment for me, in that they look at the...they take the green waste reports, and they generate some analysis for me that I use here for other, you know, educational purposes and to really see what our recycling rates are. You know, when they determine what the recycling rate is, the diversion rate, it's not on what you think. It's just not taking a number and a number. It's based on employment. It's based on the economy. It's based on our population, education. There's a whole number of host of factors that go into it.
Is our diversion rate only based on what we do through green waste, or is it the whole...all of our programs together, including garage sales, the whole thing?
It's everything, and we get good faith points for doing all the programs. The more programs you do, the more good faith points you get. So like I said, it's not just on what you physically divert from the trash. It's a whole host of numbers that go into it. It's pretty complicated. You would think it'd just be cut and dry, but it really isn't. Again, like population, with the economy, unemployment rate, that type of thing.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
We'll move on to the presentation regarding the City's Capitola's benchmark study, and it will be given by Mr. Bill Statler. Before we begin, there are...
As a point of order, I don't think we had a vote on the consent calendar.
Oh, you're right.
Just right.
We had a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, Sam. With regard to the benchmark study, anyone who would like to ask a question regarding the benchmark study, rather than have direct communication and questions to Mr. Statler, if you would pose your questions on the three-by-five cards in the back, pass them to me. During the presentation, I will present the questions to Mr. Statler. You will still get the opportunity to speak, but there will not be, you know, a question and answer period between Mr. Statler and those of the public at the podium. So if you have specific questions, if there are certain elements of the benchmark study that you question, or have questions about the methodology in general, please write your questions down. We'll make sure everyone's question gets answered. Bill Statler, great to see you again.
Well, it's delightful to be here.
And you're on.
Did you have any introductory comments you wanted to make?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a study that we spent a lot of time talking about. You'll recall that originally, the Finance Advisory Committee, while I was acting Finance Director, we worked together to identify several things that the city could do strategically, looking ahead, not just at this year's budget, but looking down the road at future year's budgets. And one of the outcomes out of the recommendations, council, was to do this, to take the opportunity to poke our heads up out of our world that we live in and operate in every day, and see how we stack up, how we compare to other cities around the state. I'm really proud of the work that Tori has done, the work that Bill's done. I think it's really interesting stuff. And more than anything, I guess, I was surprised at how good the results came out, which frankly, I can imagine people criticizing because their assumption was that we somehow cherry-picked data, or that we only tried to measure things that we thought we would do well at. I'll tell you that this is the same study that Bill did for the City of San Luis Obispo about five years ago, so the same...looking at the same metrics, through the same data sources. So this is an honest appraisal of where we stack up as a city, and I'll turn it over to Bill.
And before you do that, I just want to make a clarification. As I recall, because this council voted on letting this benchmark study go forward, Mr. Statler was our acting Finance Director. We had a contract with Mr. Statler. We were able to bring on Tori, fortunately, and it went a lot faster than we thought, so we had some extra time left at the end of Bill's contract, and that's the time we used to have the benchmark study done. We didn't, you know, just decide one day to wake up and spend thousands of dollars on a study. We had someone under contract as the acting Finance Director. Is this pretty much accurate?
Yeah, this was a...basically, there was cost savings in Bill's original contract. The scope of work ultimately contracted because we were able to bring on a permanent Finance Director more quickly than we had thought, partially through the recruitment efforts of Mr. Statler, so that ultimately, we had extra contract left over, and this was the identified project.
Great. Let's jump right in.
This type of background analysis can be a really powerful tool in assessing fiscal performance, and really, the roots of this study came from the councils and the Finance Advisory Committee's long-term look at the city's long-term fiscal health. And one of the things that certainly emerged as a question, if you will, through that process is, you know, how can we be assured that the city is doing the best possible job with the resources that it has today? Lots of ways to get at that, but this particular tool takes a look at comparable cities and where there are favorable comparisons with others, the city can have, and the community can have some reasonable assurance that the city is managing its fiscal affairs wisely. If that's not the case, if there's some areas where with comparable cities, the city seems to not be doing so well, we can identify those areas. We can recommend improvements. In some cases, it may simply be, "Yes, we are more expensive than others because of this compelling, obvious reason." In short, by benchmarking city costs, revenues, service outcomes, and practices with similar cities, we can help assess the city's fiscal accountability and provide a roadmap for improving organizational efficiency. And at the end of the day, it's one of the more empirical ways that the city can answer the question, "Are we using the resources that we have already wisely?" The benchmark report does this. It looks at kind of four distinctly different kinds of measures. First off, it's just how does a city compare financially with similar cities? Let's try and compare those service outcomes. How am I... How much things cost is one thing, but cities don't spend money on its own purpose. Cities spend money to accomplish things. So how is the city doing and accomplishing measurable objectives compared to those comparable cities? Costs are one thing, value for that cost is another. How have city workloads and staffing levels changed over time? And then lastly, has the city adopted and implemented the use of best practices in managing the resources that have been entrusted to it? We should point out, and one of the speakers kind of mentioned this, you know, benchmarking is tough, because the simple thing we want to do is just compare what are costs in Capitola, you know, per capita compared with 480 cities in the state, compared with your neighbors. But every city has a different story to tell. Some cities deliver higher service levels than others, and if that's the case, it wouldn't be surprising that costs might be higher there. Some cities are largely suburban, and so their population, if they're 10,000, that's all the people that are there, that's the number of people there at nighttime. But if you are either a major employment generator or a major tourist destination, you have a daytime population that's much larger than that that you need to service. Community demographics are going to be different. Very young communities are likely to have different demands for services than perhaps older communities. Scope of services provided, and Capitola's a really good example of that. I certainly can compare police costs in Capitola with other agencies, but you will look really, really good if I compare your fire costs to other agencies, because your fire services are delivered by a special district formed for that purpose. So if you're going to compare costs, then you want to do the best possible job of finding cities and comparing yourself with cities that have a similar scope of services. And then lastly, geography plays a really key factor in costs. And one of the examples I have in the report is if we compared street maintenance in Campbell with the street maintenance costs in South Lake Tahoe, both cities of 30,000. I think snow removal costs per capita will be slightly higher in South Lake Tahoe than they probably are in the city of Campbell. Geography plays a huge factor in evaluating costs. But just because it's hard doesn't mean it's impossible. Per capita may be imperfect, but it's the most workable common denominator. So if we want that to be meaningful, that means selecting comparable cities that are as similar as possible to Capitola, so that we make sure we get similar results. So here were the kind of the criteria, six criteria we started with, in trying to identify six to eight cities in California that would be most similar to Capitola. For population, the smallest city we wanted to look at would be 3,500. The largest city we'd want to look at would be 25,000. We wanted to find one that was located in a coastal county. We wanted to make sure that the city had a strong sense of place, that it had a highly-developed sense of unique identity. We wanted -- tourism didn't have to be the most important part of the economy. We wanted to make sure that it was a factor, so we could capture that service population that comes from a destination place. Kind of touched on this briefly, we wanted to find someone who provides a similar scope of services. In a perfect world, after a city met all those criteria, they would provide police and parks and recreation, but they wouldn't provide fire, they wouldn't provide a library, or other business-like enterprise activities like water, sewer, harbors, airports, or golf. They would really be focused on police and parks and recreation. And then sort of the last screen was, we don't want to have a race to the bottom. We don't want to compare ourselves to the worst-managed, poorest cities in the state so that we look good. We want to compare ourselves with other cities that have a positive, good reputation for management and governance of their financial affairs. So there were three basic processes we took in this selection process. There are 481 cities in the state of California. So the first screen we took a look at was that population range, location in a coastal county, and whether tourism was at least 4% of the general fund revenues. That high, that first high-level screen got us down from 481 cities down to 178 cities. Then we wanted to take a look at a similar scope of services. There isn't a city in California, quite frankly, that is a perfect service match for the city of Capitola, but we wanted to find those that had the best range of scope of services. And after we did that next screening, we ended up with about 38 cities that we thought were candidates for selection. And then we did a more detailed analysis of scope of services, and that kind of got us down to about 20 cities that looked like they were the best overall fit. Then we did a more detailed pass on the scope of services, and then we tried to use, so how are we going to screen for reputation and quality governance? And we just did some high-level things. Do they put their budgets in the audits on their websites? Have they received awards for excellence from the CSMAFO or the GFOA? And just generally, based on our knowledge, are they, you know, do they have a reputation for being well-managed and well-governed? From that, we emerged six cities that we thought would be good candidates for comparison with Capitola. Carmel, Carpinteria, Laguna Beach, Pismo Beach, Sausalito, and Scotts Valley. I think this actually turned out to be a good mix. We certainly didn't necessarily start with this notion in place, but three of these cities are larger than Capitola, three of them are smaller. And while all are coastal geographic, we have a pretty diverse group. We have two on the Monterey Peninsula, we have two on the Central Coast, one in Northern California, one in Southern California. So I think we ended up with a good mix of cities for comparison. The other thing that was interesting, it wasn't something that we actually started off looking for, but probably don't want to compare Capitola to a city that has really high growth rates and continual increases in its population or its housing units. And it turns out, these are the other six cities have very similar population growth rates. In fact, taking a look from 2010 to 2000, none of them grew in excess of 1%. Capitola's growth rate was right about in the middle. And to make sure that 2010, 2011 weren't an anomaly, we actually went back 10 years and took a look at their population growth rates, and all of them had very, very, very minor, modest increases in their population in the town. So I think their service delivery needs, based on population growth, very, very similar as well. Key assumptions, data sources and collection. To the extent possible, we wanted to rely upon independent sources. In the case of financial data, we wanted to use audited financial statements, so that we would have some third-party assurance as to the fairness of that financial presentation. In the case of data about performance, we tried to look to other sources, like the Office of Traffic Safety in the state of California, like the Federal Bureau of Investigations for Violent Crime Data. So to the extent possible, we wanted to use data sources that the city actually didn't directly control, in terms of how they provided that information, that in fact were publicly available but subject to scrutiny in terms of data reliability. Need to recognize that every city budgets and accounts for costs differently, so need to be careful that if we say this cost compared with that one, that in fact, the cities are reporting similar costs. The focus is on what I would call governmental activities. And what does that mean? That means we have excluded business-like activities that are accounted for in enterprise funds, like water, like sewer, which the city does not provide, but many other cities do. Fortunately, they account for them outside of their general fund, so that makes general fund type of comparisons more meaningful. And for the most part, this study focuses on general fund costs, general fund revenues. In selecting, what are the major cities? What are we going to compare the city against? And the city manager sort of alluded to this. We kind of have three criteria for how, what we were going to measure in the study. First off, we want to measure something that's meaningful. Just because the data's available doesn't mean it's a good indicator of what's going on. So first off, we wanted to pick something that we thought was meaningful. And while it might be a meaningful data, it's not going to be helpful if the other six cities don't have that same data available. So if we picked a metric, we wanted to make sure that we could reliably get that information from other cities. And then lastly, we wanted to make sure that what one city said something was is the same as another city, that we were in fact measuring the same thing. So as we look at the kind of those four factors, when we take a look at the first financial factors, the city compares favorably with the benchmark cities in virtually all areas. The city has lower-than-average operating costs, lower-than-average staffing levels, very low debt levels, very low administrative support costs. It is the only city of the benchmarks that have caps on its retirement costs, might very well be the only city in the state that has that. I don't know that empirically. I haven't done a survey of all 481 cities, but simply based on surveys that I've seen, my own networking with other finance officers in the state, it is really clear the city has something as a cost containment strategy that is very unique. Very low actuarial costs for retiree health costs, and in several cases, you are, the city of Capitola is the best in class. So just some quick examples, as we compare your general fund operating cost per capita, again, only Scotts Valley and Carpinteria have lower costs than you force. The cities are higher, so your costs are lower than average. When we look at your staffing costs, you have some of the lowest general fund staffing costs per 1,000 residents. In fact, if you take a look at this, you'll see that Capitola and Scotts Valley are virtually tied in terms of its staffing per 1,000 residents. Carpinteria's the lowest, but we have to remember Carpinteria doesn't deliver their own police services. Carpinteria contracts for police services. So this is really, you know, a very favorable comparison. We recognize that included in Carpinteria's staffing counts are none of their staffing costs, and this is the single largest department in the city of Capitola. As we look at a ratio of support service costs, when we look at costs like the city manager, like the city attorney, like the city clerk, like finance, like administrative services, and compare those to the total operating cost of the organization, it gives you some sense of how efficiently is the city supporting its own organizational costs. Every organization needs to have adequate, what I call, organizational infrastructure. You need to make sure, now, if you're -- the cutting red tape isn't the same thing as chaos. You need to make sure that there's accountability for the auctions that the city takes. But if we look at this, it's the lowest cost ratio of administrative support costs, and Laguna Beach is the lowest, and Laguna Beach is also the city that has the broadest range of operating costs. And I think that allows them to have some economies of scale, they can spread those costs over a larger base. But nonetheless, I think the fact that the city has one of the lowest ratios of administrative costs to total costs, I think that reflects very favorably in kind of lean administrative operations in the city. Has the lowest, based on the 2011 fiscal year ending, the lowest ratio of general fund at service costs to revenues. Couple of things I'd like to point about this slide, is the focus is on the general fund, not the total debt of the city, but that, or not only Capitola, but of all the cities, but of the general fund-supported debt as a ratio of revenues. This means three kinds of debt are not reflected in this numbers. The first one is general obligation bond debt. If a city went out, got 2/3 of the voters to pay for a new improvement, like a library, that debt service, and one or two of these cities do have general obligation bonds, wouldn't be reflected here, because that's not a general fund obligation. Those voters have approved a separate special levy to pay that. So cities could have general obligation bonds. I would not have reflected them in this chart. It would only have made the city's comparison look better, but to be, you know, straightforward about the analysis, it doesn't include general obligation bonds. It also doesn't include pension obligation bonds. Couple of key reasons for that. When the city issued pension obligation bonds, and two of these other cities have as well, your liabilities didn't change as a result of that. You simply shifted that liability from CalPERS, probably amortized over a 30-year period of time, to the pension obligation bonds you issued. And in fact, when you issue pension obligation bonds, your goal is to make the liability smaller than it otherwise was, and your cost smaller than it would otherwise have been. So be typical to not include pension obligation bonds in this type of comparison. And rating agencies, for example, as they look at your debt ratios, would not include pension obligation bonds in that ratio. And then the third one is debt that might have been incurred by your redevelopment agency. Again, why? Because that was not a general fund obligation. That was an obligation of your redevelopment agency. Although the redevelopment agency was part of the city, and that's not even the case at all anymore, because your redevelopment agency doesn't exist at all anymore. It's now a separate, independent entity, a successor agency. So none of that debt would be appropriately reflected here. It's simply not a debt of the city any longer at all. Should point out, this was a snapshot of June 30, 2011, and since then, you have issued bonds to pay for the Pacific Code financing, so I thought it might be appropriate to say, okay, if we fast-forwarded to 2011, '12, what would those debt ratios look like? You still have the second-lowest debt ratio of any of the cities here, even including the Pacific Code financing. Later this evening, you're going to be asked to take an action that will make this ratio go even smaller, because you're going to save another about $20,000 a year in debt service costs. Very, very modest use of debt financing in the city's general fund. I'd mentioned this before, you are the only city, certainly of the comparison cities, perhaps in the state, that has a total cap on how much you will pay as an employer towards CalPERS retirement costs. This has already saved you about 8% of payroll to date in your CalPERS costs, and since I know CalPERS costs from this point forward are only going to increase, and you're insulated from those cost increases because you have established a cap on the total amount. Actually, I thought the best way to demonstrate this was to take a look at employer-employee cost sharing based on your current year rates. The total required contribution to CalPERS is about 24, about 25% for your non-sworn, about 37% for your sworn, but your employees pick up over 8% of that total share, because your total contribution cap under your current labor agreements is 16.5% for non-sworn, about 28% for your sworn. And so whatever happens to CalPERS rates, you are limited to 16.5% and 28.3% or so, regardless of what CalPERS rates may increase in the future. This is a huge cost containment strategy that the city has adopted. And this makes you not only unique among the comparison cities, I think this makes you unique in the state of California. Lastly, let's talk about your reserves. We analyzed the ratio of reserves to operating costs. In this case, actually, the city has the lowest, at the end of 2011, had the lowest ratio of reserves to operating costs. Now, there's a couple of reasons for this. One of them was the money you paid out in response to the March 2011 flooding. But actually, this ratio is going to get worse, because at the end of 2011, you'd only spent about half of the money you would end up spending on this item. Think this chart, if you take a look at other cities, in Carpinteria, they're all the way up to 90%. Carmel and that same, even the smaller cities, Pismo Beach, 60%. I'm not suggesting you should be working towards 60, 70% reserves, but I can tell you this, in order to restore your reserves, get that resiliency back, in order to have the kind of financial capacity you had to begin with to respond to that flooding, you need to begin restoring your reserves. And this tells you that as you do that, you're certainly not going to be out of alignment with the kind of reserves that the comparison cities have in their general fund. So that's kind of a highlight on the financial end. So let's take a look, how's a city done in terms of using those funds to deliver services that the community wants? The first one is, you are among the safest of the benchmark communities. There's lots of reasons for that. I don't even think your police chief would purport that the police department is solely accountable for that, but certainly, it is a factor in being one of the safest communities. In fact, one of the safest communities in the state. I'll talk about that in a moment. And I think more importantly, who's probably the best arbiter of how well you're doing? It's your own residents in your own community. And you receive very, very high evaluations on the services that you provide. About 2/3 of the city residents think the city's doing an excellent or good job in providing services. In this day and age, for cities to get this kind of approval rating, I think, is amazing. I think actually, at the other side of that, only 6% of your residents think you're doing a poor job. And in some ways, I think that's a more telling number, that when given an opportunity to go, no, I'm not happy with the services the city's doing, only 6% did that. And individually, when you look at the individual services that were surveyed, police services, parks, beaches, man, almost all of them receive a satisfaction level individually of 80% or higher. So let's take a look at violent crime per 1,000 residents. You know, statistically, because of the way these things round, Scotts Valley has just a slightly lower incidence, but the reality is, you are among the lowest and significantly lower than some of the other cities. Interestingly enough, all of these cities themselves are very safe cities. So again, we're comparing you against cities that are on this measure, are doing very well. Statewide, here, the city's violent crime per 1,000 residents is about 1. Statewide, it's 4.4. So you're 75% below the statewide average, and even the highest city there, Carmel, is 25% lower than the statewide average. So you are among the best of already very safe communities. When we take a look at the rating, I kind of touched on this before, but again, 65% of your residents think you're doing an excellent or good job in delivering services. I think this next chart is really telling, because when we look at parks, 85% are satisfied with the parks that are being provided. 92% are satisfied with the police protection they're getting. 92% are satisfied with the police protection they're getting. 86% are happy with how you're maintaining the beaches. 91% are happy with street sweeping. I was really shocked by this number, by the way. So whoever's doing your street sweeping must be doing a really good job. Maybe you don't want to do that when a contract comes up for renewal, but they're doing a good job. Enforcing traffic laws, over 80%. Maintaining your local parks, over 90. And there are other services that were evaluated. But I think this tells a really positive story about how your residents are responding to the services. You're getting really high ratings, and we know that your costs are modest compared to your comparison cities. One area that did emerge as being an area of concern, and that's your pavement condition, the pavement, condition of your paving. Public works folks have a way of rating streets on a scale of 0 to 100. 100 would be like a brand-new street, excellent condition. 0 would be, it's, I don't even know what a 0 street looks like. It's dirt, I guess. And so that gives you a way of kind of objectively comparing your, the condition of your streets with others. And you can see just really quickly from this chart, you're really kind of among some of the lowest cities in terms of your condition index. You're about 68, whereas some of these other cities are into the mid-70s. So a couple of takeaways from that. Your PCI of 68, on the other hand, is right at what the statewide average is. So although, and we picked cities that are doing very well, that are good comparisons for a reason, but if you were to kind of look at how are you doing compared to the rest of the state, you're at a 68. You have a much better pavement condition index than the rest of Santa Cruz County, because it's 48 compared to your 68. And I think more importantly, if we went back about five or six years, your PCI was 57. So while at this point, your streets may not be in the same condition as some of your comparison cities, you've made some huge strides, because getting your pavement condition index increased by 10 points takes a lot of energy and a lot of effort. So the condition of your streets is clearly better than it was five or six years ago. And I think what that shows is, if you have adequate resources that you can put towards street maintenance, you can absolutely improve its condition. I don't think there's a lot of things I can guarantee you, if you spent more money on it, things will get better. But I think when it comes to street condition, really, put more money into doing overlays and slurry seals, you will get, you will get better streets. The third item we took a look at were staffing and workload trends over time. And I think, you know, the interesting thing for me was, you have fewer regular employees in Capitola today than you had 15 years ago. And you have the same number of sworn positions that you had. You can see, at least when it comes to total staffing, it stayed relatively constant, kind of in the good years, in the middle 2000s. Looks like we had to use some of those added resources to improve services. But today, in 2013, you have fewer employees than you had 15 years ago. And when you look at sworn staffing, that has stayed relatively constant throughout the entire last 15 years. And again, today, you have the same number of sworn employees that you had 15 years ago. Again, I think that reflects really well on the city's conservative approach to approving new regular positions. So to be frank, about 80% of your operating costs in general fund are driven by staffing costs. How can you control your staffing costs? Well, if you can contain your PERS costs, and if you can contain the number of employees you have, you can achieve significant cost containment in your general fund. And it's clear that's what you've done over a long sustained period of time. So the fourth area was to take a look at best practices that are there in the financial management world. And the reality is, in taking an inventory of those, you've made extensive use of those best practices. You have a multi-year budgeting process. You have taken a long-term look at your fiscal plans and strategies. You've integrated goal-setting into your budget process. You use generally accepted accounting principles in presenting your financial condition, and you receive clean, independent audits. You have lots of tools in place for ongoing reporting of your financial condition. You have comprehensive financial policies in place. Most importantly, you follow them, and you receive statewide recognition for excellence in financial reporting. And then one of the other things to point out is, you also use extensive use of the private sector in delivering city services. It's probably one of the reasons why you have such a favorable staffing ratio, is because you are using the private sector and the nonprofit sector in a creative way in order to deliver city services. In fact, contracting with the public sector nonprofits, it counts for over 20% of your general fund expenditures. So I thought I'd give you a couple of concluding thoughts, sort of based on my 37-some-odd years in city financial management, my stint here in Capitola as interim finance director, and my, and the results of the benchmark study. For many cities, the seeds of deep financial troubles are not sown in bad times. Because in bad times, most cities follow the first rule of holes, and that's when you find yourself in one, stop digging. Often, more often, the roots of fiscal troubles actually take hold in the good times, when decisions are made that are not sustainable, when the inevitable bad times arrive. It's really clear from the results of this analysis that Capitola made wise decisions in the good times. And that has really served it well in navigating its way through the tough times. No city is immune to the performance of the economy, and Capitola is no exception of this. There are global forces in the economy. No city, no matter how many nuts they put away in the summer, no matter, you know, how well they've contained costs, was not going to be challenged by the worst recession since the Great Depression. But when you think about it, how you've been able to manage your way, not only in light of the worst recession since the Great Depression, but in managing and responding to the flooding in March of 2011. You know, we often refer to reserves as rainy day fund. Well, in your case, you actually had a rainy day, and you were fortunate enough that you had the reserves that you could, that you could respond to. I think the success that we've seen over time isn't due to serendipity, it's not due to luck, but it's due to the thoughtful leadership of the city in key areas over many years, and that continues today. Key factors for the success, I think that the city has had and is likely to continue to have, foundation of clear policies and a tradition of following them, prudent reserves. I think you have a really, almost a case study example of how important those are. Conservative using of debt financing, clean audits, use of best practices, effective retirement cost containment strategies, and very transparent governance. Challenges still remain, and recovery is not fully underway. You're going to have to continue to contain costs and control costs into the future, but I think the city can be very proud of its sustained record of effective stewardship with the public resources that have been entrusted to you. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the benchmark study.
I have a couple of quick questions for you, Bill. I take it that Scotts Valley does not publish a pavement management index? That's why it was out of that chart?
I'm sorry?
Scotts Valley does not publish a PMI?
Yeah, they don't. Or at least, we were not, we followed up several times, and we weren't able to get that information from them.
And did I read the chart correctly, that Carpinteria has almost a full year of their general fund budget for reserves?
Yes, they do.
We, our policy has always been 10% and 15%, 25%. Could you comment on that?
10 and 5.
Is it 10 and 5? 15%?
You know, I will only say this about reserves. At the end of the day, reserves themselves don't speak to your financial condition. That's your ability year in, year out, to have enough resources to deliver the services the community wants. What reserves are, they're like an insurance policy, they're a risk management tool. How badly can things turn out that how you thought they would be? How much flooding can you have in March of 2011 you hadn't anticipated? And be able to respond to those without immediately having to send out pink slips to people two weeks later? It's really a question of your tolerance for risk. What can go wrong? What's the likelihood of it going wrong? And what kind of protection do I want to have when those things happen? Different cities have to answer that question for themselves. Different cities have different vulnerabilities than other cities. If Carpinteria thinks this is what they need based on their revenue situation, based on what they perceive as things that can happen that they didn't anticipate, then, you know, perhaps this is a reasonable level for them. I would, I'm a firm believer, there is only one number that I know a reserve policy has to have. It needs to at least be 0. Can't be a negative number, as it has been in some cities that I know of. So you know, anything that's above 0 is really based on, I think, a city's own unique circumstances and their own capacity for risk. I would say probably in the mainstream of California cities, probably somewhere between 20 and 25% is probably the, might be the norm, if you will. But actually, having an articulated policy of what you think it is, that is still relatively rare. So cities may have whatever number they have, doesn't mean that was intentional, may just be where they are.
And you've done benchmark studies before, I'm sure, whether it's this carefully prepared or, you know, quick benchmark studies. Have you ever been paid for a benchmark study and brought back bad news?
I'm sure, I'm sure they have. For example, you know, your PCI story is not the best story possible. So, you know, I think this study shows some areas where Capitola is doing much better than its comparisons, some areas where it's not doing as well as some of the other cities. And I can't tell you who's done this type of analysis, and it came back, you know, where the results weren't favorable. It could be there is a bias towards better news, because I think those cities that know they have bad news, don't want, don't go on the journey.
And if I'm not mistaken, you did step in, in Bell, California, and square some things away. So you've seen the worst of the worst?
Yeah, and actually, I've seen, from a governance trust perspective, probably the worst situation that any city in California could be in. But I also saw over the course of a year period of time, how through good governance, through a commitment to transparency, a commitment to fiscal health, that city turned themselves around, I think remarkably, in about a year. But you know, I do have a tale of two cities here, if you will.
Okay, I'm going to let the other council members ask their questions, then I'm going to give the audience questions to you directly. Sam?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Bill, for this report. I think really quantifying and, you know, in a comparative basis, reflecting what we all know, is that, you know, we live in a well-run city. I have a couple of questions, and one was the element of tourism. I know it was reflected in the percentage of general fund revenue, but in calculating the per capita cost, was there some effort to factor that in? In particular, the governmental cost per capita? Because I can't imagine, well, as we know, some weekends, our population will rise from 10,000 to maybe 40,000. And I think we also know that that's not the case in Scotts Valley. And so, and even though, I mean, we're just right above Scotts Valley on the governmental cost per capita. So was there, was there some effort to factor that in, into this analysis in terms of the per capita cost? Is it just too complicated to do? But somehow, recognizing that what the staff have to deal with is just not 10,000 people on many, many days?
I think as you look at the numbers, to the degree that it is kind of consistently Scotts Valley that is at the lower end, and you realize you have different service demands in Scotts Valley, I think that's a calculus you have to do yourself. We picked Scotts Valley because it is so close in population to you, they are so close geographically to you. They did make that high-level screen for TOT revenues. If they hadn't, we probably would not have included them. But their TOT revenues are actually not a lot less than yours. But we know that really, the impact on you isn't necessarily people staying in hotels, it's people coming to the beach. Maybe they're only staying for the day. I think Laguna Beach has similar challenges. I think, I know Pismo Beach does, because I'm similar there. Carpinteria is also very similar. It doesn't necessarily have a lot of overnight accommodations in Carpinteria, but a lot of people go to Carpinteria for the day to go to the beach. And those people who do stay in Carpinteria, they have a really large state park adjacent to them. And you have actually a very similar situation in Capitola as well. I think that may be, you know, kind of a case where, well, you know, maybe Scotts Valley has one of the lowest numbers here, but they probably don't have the same kind of daytime population challenges that you have. Some of these other cities do, and of course, in those cases, you're doing better than them.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for clarifying that. My other question goes to our reserve level, which is on page 17 of your report. And I wanted to, and you did recognize that this, you did this report as of June of 2011, which was just three months after our flood. Most of our expenses had not occurred at that point, but certainly by this time, and at that time, we had the lowest percentage, even then, at just, you know, little bit over 20%. Have you been able to, or do you have a sense of what that figure is as of this date? And after it's been significantly depleted, and where we may stand?
I don't. I know your staff does. I don't know if we're prepared to talk about this evening, but I'm certain the staff can get back to you. I can assure you, and your point, council member, was exactly on point, you hadn't spent most of the money you were going to end up spending by June 30 of 2011. That reserve level just, you know, since that time, has gotten lower.
Bill Stattler's report includes also the internal service funds, the equipment stores, IT and liability funds. And if we compare that to what we're estimating for year-end, for fiscal year 11, 12, it looks like that number will change to about 15 to 16%.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Kirby, anything?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've lived in this area, in the Mid-County area, for some 40 years, and worked as a real estate broker and developer, and raised a family, and been involved in the community at various levels. And one of the things that I've noticed is that nobody leaves here on purpose. And as I've traveled around campaigning, running for office, and as a, as a member of the city leadership, I've taken the time frequently to ask the question in a public forum. Let's have a show of hands, how many people here would rather be someplace else? Detroit? Cleveland? Cincinnati? You know, Tijuana? You know, take your, and you know, people are pretty happy here. So when we decided to do this report, this study, I thought, you know, intuitively, we all have a pretty good idea that we're doing a lot of things right here. We even had a previous study and asked people if they were happy, and most of them were. And for those who would say it's self-serving to hire someone to go to do a study and show us what a good job we're doing, I don't think so. I think it's actually kind of second guessing. When you're traveling down the road, everything is really going well, you start to look over your shoulder and kind of wonder if you're missing something, if you're kidding. And it's nice to get an independent, third-party empirical report to confirm what you intuitively know. And I think you did a really good job. I'm glad we did the report, and I'm glad that you did it. Having said all of that, we do have some, two areas that we really need to focus on in the future, and I would hope that the Finance Advisory Committee would lead the council and the, and the community toward re-establishing the reserves that have been depleted because of the flood and disasters of the past two years. And we also need to spend a little more time, a little bit more money prioritizing the time and the money to upgrade our pavements from where they are now. Anybody who drives Claire Street, for example, is pretty hard to look at that street and think it's doing pretty well. So I think it's always good to evaluate, and just to kind of see if there's things that you can improve on, and I think it's a good report, I'm glad we did it, so. Thank you.
Bill, I think this report shows a good understanding of our community and how it's worked, and it's nice to do a comparison back 15 years. It really is. And these are, I learned a lot from this report. I did. We're very sensitive as a community of being compared to Carmel. We've always shied away from, we are not Carmel. But being in the same group with Laguna Beach, Carmel, Sausalito, and Carpinteria, it's not a bad place to be for Capitola. I mean, those are cities that are tourist, tourist-related. And the similarities are the same. One thing that is not similar is that, if I'm not mistaken, Capitola has a regional shopping center that these communities do not have. They have strip-type developments, they have commercial areas, but I don't think in any of those, maybe Laguna does in the back section, but I don't think they have a regional shopping center. And I go to that table five, and you pointed right out, that Capitola's city's sales tax revenues are strong compared to the benchmark cities. And that's basically, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, that's the reason. If we took just our tourist business, we certainly would be more in the line of Carpinteria or...
Yeah, I think you have kind of a three-level still here for retail that is strategically really advantageous for you. You have the specialty retail in the Village, and that would be similar to the kind of retail that a number of these other cities have. You have large format shopping... have large format shopping on 41st Avenue, and you have auto dealers. And that's kind of the trifecta, if you will, for a city. On one hand, you know, those auto sales kind of hurt everyone who was strong in those from 2006 to 2012. You probably are unique in terms of kind of, of these cities and having all three of that, that type of retail. It also means that to the degree that's your strongest tax base, you're importing a lot of those taxes because of the large format retail, because of the specialty retail, and because of the auto sales.
Why would you explain that our property tax revenues per capita are so low?
You know, I was, quite frankly, you know, there are times when you are surprised by the results, you know, and I looked at, I thought maybe it was because of uniqueness in the way that your property taxes are allocated here, and that's why I looked at assessed valuation as well. You know, the, the closest I can come to underst, to understanding it, and it just, it is what it is in this particular case. You know, perhaps you just haven't had the turnover in properties, perhaps you've had longer-term residents than some of these other communities have had, they've had greater turnover. So there was more of an opportunity to re-benchmark, you know, the, the market value of homes when they sold. That's probably the best, you know, supposition I can give you. But to me, that was a surprising finding that, one, I didn't necessarily expect your retail sales to be so much stronger than, than the other benchmark cities. On the other hand, I was kind of surprised that your property tax-related revenues, that your assessed valuation was relatively speaking so, so much lower.
Maybe when you're looking at the communities we're compared with, Carmel, Sausalito, Laguna Beach, very, very high-end communities, so...
Yeah, but as a visitor to your town, you know, you have some pretty nice homes here too.
The other, the other thing that was surprising to me is that, being that we have a regional shopping center, that actually, and maybe the chief can correct me on this, is that we get an awful lot of calls and a lot of crime rate that is developed by not within the residential community of Capitola, or let's say, the Village area. It's, it's mainly the malls themselves create higher crime rate, yet our crime rate as a safe community is fairly low. That's saying something for our police department, I think, right there. Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions from the audience. Why was the city manager position and his staff not mentioned, I suspect, with regard to comparisons with other cities? Did you do anything with regard to our staffing compensation, the base compensation against a comparison to what other cities pay?
Yeah, you know, what we selected, I think we have about six or seven positions, and what we tried to do was pick the positions that were most likely similar positions in other cities, so we were comparing apples to apples. We wanted to select the positions that represented the broadest range of, of the staff you have. And we did pick one senior management position as a benchmark. It would be easy enough to compare city managers if there was interest in doing that. We did pick out of, I think, the seven or eight positions, we did pick one senior management position, and you were right in the mainstream of the comparison cities for that senior management position. And my guess is, if we were to look at the other senior management positions in the city, you'd probably similar position. But if somebody was interested in picking a position, you know, it would be an easy enough analysis to do.
And I believe that four years ago, we did a salary comparison with other cities, and it's a matter of public record, and, and we actually have that for every single position in the city of Capitola. I recall being a part of that. Remember that? Am I correct? About four years ago? At the request? Okay. So that, that information is available. What is the city's total debt, and what is the debt service? Are you aware of that? And this may be a Tori question as well.
I don't want to say that. Between your comprehensive annual financial reports and your budget documents, you do an excellent job of disclosing that. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it is all disclosed in your audited financial statements in, in great detail. Again, when I did this analysis, I wasn't focused on your total debt, I was focused on the general fund. Because other cities are gonna have water services they've issued bonds for, they're gonna have sewer stuff they've issued bonds for. In your case, the analysis that's here, really clear the methodology was to take a look at the general fund. And I will say, although I don't have those numbers handy, I don't know if Tori does either off the top of her head, it is all fully disclosed in your audit statements.
Tori, maybe you can hold to the microphone. I know you have some of these numbers, and just for the, for information for the member of the audience that asks this question, it'd be nice to get a, to get a figure on this. I don't, I hate to put you on the spot, but you have so many budgets there in front of you, you have to have this number somewhere.
While she's looking.
Yes.
Yeah, do you want to go on to another question? Why?
Sure, sure.
While she's looking, it's interesting to note, if you look at the relationship, the ratio between our debt service and our revenue, it's about one-half of 1%. And if you were going out to buy a, a car or a house, you know, they'll accept like 35%. So I'm not suggesting we should do that, but what I am saying is that we are living well within our ability to service the very small amount of debt that we, that we have.
Yeah, I would point out, again, this is one of those cases where when you look at the comparisons with the other cities, everyone has a relatively modest amount of debt compared to standard. Standard and poor's and the, the large rating agencies, they don't get concerned about your debt ratio if you're kind of looking for an industry standard until it gets about 10%. That's when they get concerned. All of these cities, the highest one is about 6. As you pointed out, the cities is far lower than that. So again, when you look at the comparison of the cities' debt service ratio, we're comparing that to other cities that also have very low debt relative to statewide standards.
When you, when you look at our, our current debt, we have, for the general fund, we have about $193,000 in the, in the, in the new debt for the Pat Cove closure. And then we also have, if you're looking at pension obligation bonds, which is about $600,000 annually. And again, as Bill Statler mentioned, that's also in replacement of per's liabilities. To give you the amount that we have for our successor agency, I would have to pull the actual recognized obligation payment schedule. But I would note that all of the obligations within the successor agency have a dedicated property tax resource to fund those.
And, but, you know, when you talk about 193K, I think we have more like 2.5 because of the Pat Cove debt, which is the only real debt we have besides pension obligation. So when you have 193K, that was debt service?
That was debt service, yes.
Right, not actual debt. So we have a total of about 1 point, or 2.4, not counting the pension obligation bond, which only has about five years to go before it's completely paid off, I might add. Because we, four more years. So we have about 2.4 million left on a $10 million debt that we bonded around some years ago. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And this is a question probably for the city manager, because I know it speaks to the former, the successor agency, to the former redevelopment agency, and that is, does the city subsidize former rent-controlled mobile home parks? I suspect we mean subsidize former rent-control residents of mobile home parks. And where does the money come from?
Mr. Mayor, council members, the city, in the course of the, the settlement of all the litigation associated with rent control in, in the mobile home parks, established a rental assistance program to help out those residents who are low-income, who were impacted by the repeal of rent control. The city established that program about a year and a half ago, coincident with ultimately the repeal of the rent control ordinance. There are residents in the Castle Mobile Home Park, Surf and Sand Mobile Home Park, and at Cabrillo Mobile Home Parks who are all receiving benefits from the city. The obligation in the program, as it was originally created, was a 10-year agreement. All of the residents who are signed up for the program, a requirement to the program was also for them to be on the Section 8 voucher list, which is the federally funded state rental assistance program. So that is, the intent of the program was to eventually transfer people off the city's books onto the state and federal government's books. The cost of the program was about $100,000 a year, and it's entirely funded, it's a recognized obligation of the successor agency, the former redevelopment agency. It's been approved by the Oversight Board, it's been approved by the Department of Finance. So the payments are made from the property taxes that would've gone to the redevelopment agency. So there's no impact on this, any money that the city, no impact on any city money, if you will.
And that's a, that was a 10-year commitment, and it's, as the people move on to Section 8, that commitment goes down?
That's correct. As residents move on to Section 8, when they get a Section 8 voucher, which unfortunately, the waiting list for Section 8 vouchers is distressingly long. In addition, there aren't new mem, no new members are eligible. It was only intended to be a rental assistance program to assist low-income residents who were affected by the city's repeal of its rent control ordinance. So there's, as people move, sell their coaches and move to a new location, there's no new people coming onboard onto the program.
Thank you. I hope that answers the question. I'd like to open this up to the floor now. I think we have a member of the Finance Advisory Committee here, Will. Did you want to come up and say something? And anyone else in the audience who would like to speak, please feel free.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Will O'Sullivan, and I'm representing our Finance Advisory Committee. And I, I think we just wanted to endorse this enterprise first and foremost. We think it was a worthwhile enterprise to do a benchmark study. We admire Mr. Statler's methodology, his analysis, and his use of our committee's feedback in his final report. We think it's a useful and a valuable report. We intend, as a, as a committee, to use it as a resource document and a tool to inform our budget discussions this year going forward. And we certainly urge council to do the same in its budget decision-making.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council regarding the report? Sandy?
We got one of those overhead projector things here.
Oh, we have one that we can crank up pretty darn easy. You want to pass what you'd like over there?
You may.
Turn on the, there's all sorts of buttons she's gonna push on you there, Bill. I'm not sure what puts it up on the screen. You're on your own on that one.
I don't know, an IT person is giving this general funds portion of the budget, right? And this is public works up here, dude?
That's right. He's our, he's our second-string IT professional. That's right.
That's right. You know, I'm still going by the same name, Sandy Erickson. And I still live in Capitola. And I appreciate the opportunity to look at this. And I can appreciate that everybody here is so happy to have such a glowing report. And I know that Mr. Statler was the contract finance person for about six months. And I do, and I appreciate you asking the question, or somebody else asking it. I mean, what's he gonna do? Say, you either didn't follow my advice, therefore you're all screwed up, or you did follow my advice, and lo and behold, you're a star.
I don't know if he was here long enough to give us any advice.
Well, I hope that he gave us some advice.
He did, he did.
But I think that it should not be, you know, comparisons are interesting things. And I think it is, people understand what do you owe, and what does it cost to owe it, and where does the money come from. And I think playing these shell games with successor agencies and various and sundry things, it is all money that the city is obligated for regardless of where they get it. Now, if I'm wrong about that, then somebody correct me. And to say that you excluded the pension obligation bond, you know, when you, when you go through this and you read these things and you see what he left out, to come up with such a low amount of indebtedness. Now, we looked at all these cities, and I think that's great. We all know that there's a lot of stuff going on in all the cities. And quite frankly, government at all levels, for the most part, has some form of cancer. Now, whether you've got one that's gonna kill you in six months, or whether you've got one that you probably have a long-term survival rate of five or 10 years. But what we seem to be doing is codifying what we've already been doing. And what we're saying here about wanting to raise the sales tax, because, I mean, it seems to me that this was a pretty self-serving thing, to have it delivered right now at a time when you want to go to the citizens and say, we need more sales tax. So you spent $30,000 or $36,000. When I called and asked how much it cost, I was first told that it was, the, the study itself cost $6,750. But then they said, well, maybe it was all balled up in the $30,000 that they came for. But, you know, we've had, we had the rent control folly, we had the Rispin mansion folly, all these things that went on for 30 years. And that's a little bit like the horses getting out of the corral. And now you've slammed the gate and said, well, look how good we're doing right now, but the horses are out already. So you need to give us some more money so we can get our horses back. But I don't see anybody talking about doing anything fundamentally different than what we've been doing all along. You know, we talk about the cap, but when you, on the pension obligation for the city employees, but when you read about it, and you've got this cap, but then someplace for the last 30 years, they've negotiated that they're supposed to contribute, but they negotiated to get the city to do the contribution in a lot of these cities, as, you know, as you read this. I think this would've been a much better report if it had started off with, this is what we owe, this is what it costs us to owe it, rather than having to see in the fine print. And, and they're not gonna get my little chart up there. I took one of his. I'm sorry I...
It's, it's, it's...
Oh, it's about to get...
It's quickly getting up there.
It's quickly getting up there.
All right, there we go.
And I appreciate you, lo and behold...
Take the city manager, Beth.
That's it.
Higher, higher-level executive.
You know, so that, so that when you, when you talk about these things, I mean, and it's particularly difficult when you talk about everything in percentages. Okay? Because we know if you had one murder last year, and this year you had two, that's 100% increase. Okay? So this is not that easy a thing to say, other than if you want to stand up and glow about it. But I went through and marked an X on what everybody does. And Laguna Beach is a full-service city, and Pismo Beach is a full-service city. And everybody else is some sort of hybrid. And you can see Capitola right there in the middle. And we know that Parks and Recs pays for itself. You said it? We, we talk about it all the time.
We've just about gotten to that point.
Point, that's right. And so we've got the police department and our other public works things that take up the money. And I would submit to you that for the last 30 years, the city has done stuff with the money besides take care of the streets and the sidewalks, and fix sewer pipes that run under trailer parks. So I think there's that fundamental problem that's been going on a long time. But now you have produced a benchmark study that says, when you compare us to these other cities, well, the comparison is whose cancer is the worst, and who is going to the bottom the fastest. I think it'll take us a long time to get there. We're lucky. And I'm hoping that Target and getting new jobs and having more people come here and shop will increase the revenue. It, it is a complicated study, and I think that it is particularly meant to be fuzzy. And it is. And I'm, and the good news is, you guys are sitting here right now, and you have to listen to me right alone, council after council after council, for at least the 30 years that I've been listening to some of the history over, has taken us down this path. And y'all are trying to get it together, but I don't think you're looking at doing any fundamental change. You're looking at what's going to support what you already have and keep it. Interesting that we still have, we have less employees, but we're spending more money on them. So you, you can talk about that, but the reality is the cost of going up, as I quote Kirby's little study that he did and put up, you know, several months ago about expenses increasing. So I thank you for the opportunity to, to speak to this. I think that for, if you're not a public employee and you're not on the city council, you, you don't find that this is as glowing a report as all of you do. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill, I can ask you one follow-up question. I believe that you adjusted the city expenses in the general fund for enterprise funds such as fire, water, and sewer. Did you not, did you back that out?
Yeah, in most cases, things like water and sewer weren't in their general fund. Several of these cities do provide fire, and I excluded the fire costs from these numbers so that we could get it as apples and apples as possible.
Thank you. And I think our only action, I'll bring it back to the council now, I see no one else speaking, but I think our only action is to receive the report. And, you know, a quick calculation, just, you know, it has been mentioned that our, our payroll has increased dramatically over the last 10 years. If, if a group of employees is given what I consider the minimum, barely keeping up with CPI, which is a 2% to 2.5% increase compounding over 10 years, they do make 150% more at the end of 10 years. It's just math. So, you know, we have to take that into consideration. Anybody, Kirby, you got anything to say here?
I would just say, Mr. Mayor, that democracy is a messy, inefficient, imperfect process. But I think Winston Churchill said it best when he said that it's, democracy is the worst form of government except for... except for all the other kinds. And I'm going to move approval of the staff recommendation to receive the report and direct the Finance Advisory Committee to continue reviewing the document for its fiscal strategies.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose?
I've got one, one point, one...
Please, go right ahead, Dennis.
If I read Proposition O correctly, two, two of the headline items that Prop O will take care of within the city are street improvement programs and re-establishing our reserves. And in this report, that's exactly the emphasis of what he came up with as being problems that the city had to address.
Thank you. We'll move on to consideration of a resolution adopting the proposed city fee schedule for fiscal year 212, 213. Staff? Mr. Statler, thank you. Thank you.
We're bringing forward the proposed fee schedule with the following changes. The recreational fees were approved as part of the fiscal year 1213 budget process with a $2 difference for registration fees for residents and non-resident fee changing to residency, changes to city residents only. There's also a correction. In the 2009 fee schedule, the total building valuation had a cap of $100,000 per project. And in reviewing information with staff, that cap was listed in error. As we review our records, we can't see that there was a project with a valuation of $16.7 million. So, that cap wouldn't have been applicable. So, we're moving forward and recommending that the cap be removed.
This is the only change you have for us?
Yes, just those three changes. We aren't, we aren't putting in for a CPI increase this year. We were going to reevaluate all the fees just as a, as a measure to make sure that we're compliant with Prop 26, to make sure that all of our, all of our fees do not exceed reasonable costs.
Questions of staff? Dennis?
Originally, I was thinking that cap meant that the evaluation was set at $100,000. Apparently, not.
They're removing the cap.
Yeah, so it gets, it gets huge. Are we discussing the whole fee schedule right now?
We're discussing, yes. I mean, there's the free schedule amendments, and we want to talk about it.
Okay. Page 81. General plan maintenance fee. And I give you an example of a recent development within Capitola. A single-family residence, excuse me, it was a duplex, but a single building that was assessed in construction value at $600,000 were charged $3,600 in general plan maintenance fee. If I compare the same project to the County of Santa Cruz, it would be about $350. We're 100% more expensive to do our general plan maintenance fee than any, than the County of Santa Cruz. And I could not find any information on the other cities. But somehow, and I can't exclude myself, we approved a building valuation formula that's way off the charts. No single person should have to pay $3,600 towards a general plan within the city of Capitola. It's unjust. It's unfair. And it isn't, if I'm not mistaken, we really have only the right to charge what it costs to do these, or maintaining services. And I think this, this item is, is not fair to the public or to the city to have to force it. And I understand that our general plan update needs a certain amount of money to operate, but they shouldn't be put on the, on the shoulders of a few people developing their property within the city.
I think, I think we made a serious arithmetic mistake in this. And that is, we did not impose this particular general plan fee until we were too far down the road, and we had to make up a lot of money fast to get to the $1 million we needed for the general plan. If we consider that we have 10 to 20 years to make for the next general plan, then that should be something like 0.2%. Because if we run that 0.2% backwards from this date back 20 years, we would have had $1 million. What we didn't do is start the general plan fee soon enough for our present general plan. Now, with regard to the money we need for the rest of this general plan, I don't care if we give another dime to this general plan. $1 million for what we're doing right now is disgraceful. So, I'd have to sit with Dennis right now and not approve that general plan valuation or drastically reduce it or send it back to staff to recalculate what we anticipate for the next 10 or 20 years to get us to, in 20 years, I'll give you a $2 million general plan. How's that? But remember why that fee was so high. The fee was high because we started it eight years ago instead of starting it 20 years ago. So, now we're at the beginning. Let's do the right thing. Any other questions, staff?
I got a couple more.
There's another factor that...
On the same subject?
On the same subject, there's another factor that plays into that is that over the past 20 years, there's been probably more building than there's going to be in the next 20 years because we don't have any lots left and, you know, so that's going to come into play too. Besides that, you have the inflationary factor that anything you do now is going to be arguably a lot more expensive in, in 20 years. So, I'm not completely buying into your rationale here.
Well, you understand that we, we developed $1 million in the course of six years, right? Where, because we just didn't have a general plan maintenance fee before then. So, now, we have one at the onset, the beginning of a new general plan. We should need far less. And I, I question it because this is not on residential only. This is on residential, commercial, all building, correct?
Yes.
So, I think that we will continue to build.
It's less than 1%. It's 0.6%, right?
It's less than 1%. What I'm saying is, it was made that amount because we knew that we had to get $1 million within six years.
When did we, when did we set that fee?
Was it six years ago or eight years ago? Six years ago, that fee was set to get, we didn't, never had a general plan maintenance fee, correct? And it was just instituted in the year 2000, 2003, '04?
Mr. Mayor, let me, I can provide a little bit of background.
You understand where I'm going, reaching with this?
Exactly where you're going. And let me provide a little bit of background that I think could help the discussion. I believe that it was 2003 or 2004 that the fee was originally implemented. And it was implemented at 0.37, 0.37 of building valuation at that time. I believe it was in 2006 that it was increased to 0.7, 0.7. When I came to be Community Development Director, there were some large-value projects moving through the, through the system at that time. And I, I raised the flag, if you will, of saying, for some of these large-value projects as resulting in relatively large payments for the general plan. In addition, I had thought at that point that we were probably collecting more than we would, looking at this holistically, more than we would ultimately need for the general plan update. Your Council and I went back and reviewed that hearing recently. Didn't want to establish a specific break for just the big guys, but instead suggested that the overall fee be lowered to a level that everyone would get a lower rate. So, the rate came down from 0.7 to 0.6%, and that was done in 2008. You recall that we have a contract for our general plan update, and there's a little bit of a cat-and-mouse game going on. The contract amount is more than we have the actually money in the bank in the general plan update fund. So, there's an expectation over this next year that the, ultimately, the fees that people will pay will equalize out to complete the contract, complete the work.
How much are we talking about?
Off the top of my head, I don't have a specific figure, but I think it's about $100,000 as we close out the contract, finish up the work, 150. Finish up the work with the general plan, finish up the work with the zoning ordinance, finish up the work with the local coastal plan update. So, my recommendation at this point would be to stick with this fee because otherwise, you're going to be looking, either, either we'll be looking at a different model for the general plan update, which, which I would recommend against changing horses at this stage in the game. But rather, take a look at this when we do get the general plan update and all the bills are written. And at that point, then I think some figure closer to where you originally adopted certainly could be considered because you would be operating then on a 20-year timeline to accumulate funds for your next general plan update.
If, what if we do nothing until the general plan is finished and then consider this?
Mr. Mayor, that, I think that that's entirely consistent with what I'm suggesting, that if you do nothing with it at this point, leave it the way it is. And then, when the general plan is completed, we could take a bigger picture and look.
So, basically, we wouldn't be taking any action on changing the general plan maintenance fee tonight?
I would, the cap was implemented, frankly, I went back and reviewed the Council meeting. And unfortunately, I think that the Council's discussion, because we developed during the course of that meeting a different action ultimately than the strict staff recommendation. I think the previous city clerk didn't entirely understand the Council's action. So, frankly, the cap wasn't something that I thought was included in the Council's motion or discussion. So, I believe that the cap is an error. Now, if you think that the cap is appropriate, if you do nothing, that cap remains in place.
Have we been charging according to the cap or have we been charging according to the 0.6%?
The cap is, the cap is only, would affect a project with a valuation over $16.5 million. We haven't had any projects like that. And frankly, I don't anticipate any projects like that. So, if you want to not touch it at all, I really don't think it would be a big deal.
Kirby, it's interesting to note that our public arts fee is higher than the general plan maintenance fee. Public arts fee is 1%. This is 0.6%. How does that go together?
Well, if I look at the public art we've gotten and I look at, I'm trying not to use a derogatory term for what we're going to get for the general plan. But I look at the general plan, I find much more beauty in the public art.
Well, but if public art isn't mandated by the state, the state requires...
This is true.
The state requires us to redo the general plan periodically. Now, whether or not we're spending too much to do that is another question. I tend to agree with you on that. It's hard to look at what we're getting and see that $1 million. But it, you know, it strikes me that, you know, we are collecting 1% of projects over $250,000 that are non-residential for public art. And I think some people would object to that more than, you know, 0.6% for a state-mandated process, so...
I completely disagree with you, Kirby. I mean, the public arts program is collected mostly from commercial development. Only commercial development, not residential.
That's what I said.
So, so on the, on the grounds of charging someone 0.06% for residential development, and he has about $600,000, it's not an uncommon figure for construction today. And that's what the city establishes the assessed value, nobody else.
Well, we also charge 0.6% for the general plan on commercial as well.
Correct. They do, with the cap.
So, the commercial people get hit twice. They get the 0.6% plus they get the 1% on the art fee. So, I tend to go along with the staff recommendation on this.
So, my, I'm just giving, I gave you example of someone who paid $600,000 and paying, paying $3,200 into a general plan update. It's absurd for one person to pick up that much of the tab of the city's bill. This is something the city should take care of over long-term, and the bill should have been reasonable as other jurisdictions are doing. All of a sudden, because we don't have enough money to do our update, we're throwing it on to residential development that's actually absorbing enormous costs both for water and infrastructure today as it is. That's, every time you throw $3,200 onto, onto, onto a project, like, it gets less likely that it'll happen or that the people will complete the project. I'm, you know, if, if we need to have the money until the general plan update's going on, I'm fine with going along with that. But I think that we should direct staff to go back and look at what is a fair, really a fair value for what a person's, the services they're provided for that.
But hasn't the staff already done that?
No, we're, we're asking them to come back because what's, the red, the fly in the ointment here is our current general plan that we need to catch up on. But we've asked the staff that when the general plan is complete, to come back to us and recalculate this so it reflects where we expect to be.
Well, the current general plan is fully funded.
No, it's $100,000 short because it just wasn't enough money before.
Once it's fully funded, then, then we should actually be moving towards...
Feeling, feeling our pain.
It's over 10%.
How, how long is that going to be before it comes back?
Before the general plan comes back?
Right. And this analysis? If we, because if you're saying we do nothing, if we just, then our existing structure's going to be applied for how, how long?
The analysis required to look at what some other general plan update fees are, I think you're going to find, I think you're going to find, I haven't done this before, but a wide range in fees. We are certainly at the higher end. I don't think that that's, that's one of the reasons when I first came here that I brought, brought it to the Council's attention. We can turn that around relatively quickly. I don't think the next meeting is reasonable, but the second meeting in October certainly would be...
I think, I think the question is, when will we receive the general plan and be able to change this?
So, if you're looking...
Right. Yeah, that's the question.
Okay. So, if you're looking for the intersection between the contract amounts and the funding amounts, you know, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't have that figure. My recollection is that at the end of this fiscal year or halfway through the next is where those lines were projected to intersect.
Kirby?
My recollection of the contract with the consultants who were into our spearheading our general plan was $650,000. And I thought we had about $900,000 in the, in the sinking fund. Isn't that correct? So, we're, we're going to have money left over, right?
Mr. Mayor, we have been using some of those funds to pay the staff's time associated with preparing the general plan update.
But do, did the money, over and above the $650?
Right. So, the general plan update has been fully funded. Some of Susan Westman's time is billed directly against the general plan update fund. So, you know, again, I unfortunately have not looked at those numbers recently. But you're right, the contract for the general plan update was about that $650, $700,000. We billed some against the staff time. So, I don't know exactly where those two lines are scheduled to intersect.
All things taken into consideration, are you anticipating that we're going to have adequate funds to pay for the general plan? Or are we going to have some money left over? Or are we going to have to get more to get through this cycle?
My estimation is that we have enough money.
You just said we had to raise an extra $100,000.
Without making a change. If you make a change today, we would have to reevaluate. But with no change today with the current system, we're going to have enough money to complete the general plan update.
Which means we need, we need to collect another $100,000 between now and the general plan finish.
No.
Is that what, because that's what I heard before, no?
No.
I, I think that that's, that's an accurate assessment, that the current fees, they bring in about $100,000 a year.
Right.
So, over the next years, the current fee is assuming a rate of development project coming in the door that's been historically consistent would bring in $100,000, which I think rounds out the entire financing package.
So, that would, that $100,000 would go towards this present general plan in addition to what we had?
Yes.
What's, what's the, how much do we have in that fund right now?
The current fund balance estimated at the beginning of this fiscal year was $300,000. And we're programming $152,000 out. Sorry, excuse me, expenditures of $211.
And how much of the $650,000 have we already spent?
You know, eyeballing the total amount of expenditures that we've had out of the fund since 9/10, we spent $100,000 in 9/10, which I believe was, $100,000 in 9/10, $350 in 10/11, $238... No, sorry, $211, we estimated in 11/12. And the adopted budget this year includes $240.
So, that was $240 to that?
That's $700,000 we've spent already.
And this year is $240.
And this year is $240. That'd get you up at $940. And this is, and we're, we're doing this under the 0.6% figure that we've got in the books, right?
Yes. My recommendation at this point would be to adopt the rest of the fee schedule. And if you'd like to take a closer look at the general plan update fee and how we're going with the overall budget, I think that rather than trying to fly by the seat of our pants here and come up with something, if we're going to be making a change, it may make more sense to provide you with the background information.
Yeah, I'd like to have that analysis and, and looking in. And also, I was just, I wanted to ask the question whether, and if we go negative on this particular general plan, can we recoup that over the next 20 years?
There might be a question better directed to Council. You know, the, the fees that are collected on the project, obviously, collected on individual projects need to be used for general plan updates. So, the question is, is if we use general plan money in fronted this fund, could we then begin to recoup that from future general plan fees? And I don't know if development impact fees, if they could be used in that regard or not. But it's certainly something we could look into.
I just wanted a possibility to just lower the rate so that, you know, we're, we're helping the property owners, developers. and, but if that brings us into a negative position, but we have 20 years to ultimately maybe recover. It seems like the rate could be significantly less over a 20-year period. But if, if we're in a negative position, maybe it's incrementally more over 20 years to recoup that. And so, we'll just consider that when you come back and do us an analysis, and so, maybe we don't have to wait a year and a half.
Right, I'm feeling, the, the feeling of the council is, you've gotten the message, and I'm thinking that we're going to probably approve this fee schedule, but we want to see that come back to us for serious review. Does that sound like what we were talking about?
Yeah, fine with that, yeah.
I'd like to open this up to the public.
I got, I got a couple more.
Oh, we're ahead, Dennis, sorry.
When we adopted our green building ordinance, at the time, we set a fee of, I think it was, review fee of, I think it was $1,500, that $1,500? The green building ordinance is completely changed now. Now it's state-regulated, it's all mandated into our plans. There's no reason to have a fee set up for the building inspectors to review something that is mandatory in the building, in the building code. In other words, I think we need to look at what, what we're charging people for green building in relationship to the amount of work that, that our building inspectors have to do. So I'd like staff to take a look at that, what's going to happen with the new, the new green building ordinance that's coming through at the end of the year.
Right, and I can, I can go along with keeping the green building fees if we substantially step up our green building threshold. If we go be, well beyond the state mandate, then I think we can make some argument for the green building fees. If we are just at the state regulatory level, there's no reason for them to be there. So that's something we should look at in the near future as well.
Thank you. I have one more. When you go to adopt a rabbit, you have to pay $50. But when you go and adopt a chicken, you only have to pay $10. Why is the rabbit worth more than the chicken?
Because the chicken gives you eggs.
You can adopt a rodent for $10.
For the same price as a chicken?
Yeah, same price as a chicken.
Well, but a rabbit never crossed the road.
You can adopt a chicken?
You can adopt a chicken, or a rooster, for $10. But a rodent's going to cost you the same amount. But a rabbit, that's $50.
Softer.
No response from staff? Okay.
Not, they would dare touch that. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Come and talk to us about the fee schedule, rodents, chickens, and rabbits. Jacques Bertrand.
Yes. When we first came to Capitola, in the moving frenzy, we lost our rabbit. My daughter still talks about it.
That's why, that's why it's $50, okay.
Yeah, a lot of them down there.
So, you know, we went down to city hall, and it was just too stiff for us, so. When the city manager develops his scenario for the fee structure for doing general plans, I'd like an option to consider progressive fee. So I completely agree with Dennis, that, you know, someone's trying to build a house, a condominium, you know, this is like a major investment for them that they probably saved up for who knows how many years. And, you know, to have a tacked-on $3,000 to $4,000 for a medium-sized house, that's a lot. But for a large project, I think that's not a big deal to ask them to pay a little bit more, so we could actually support individual homeownership in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacques. Anyone else? If not, we'll bring it back to the council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Sure, second?
Second. With comment to staff.
Yes, and they've heard us well. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Moving on. Jamie, is Tori going to take care of the financing, and you're going to leave us now? Have a good trip. Next item on our agenda is consideration of a tax-exempt refinancing option for the Pacific Cove bond. Our finance director, Tori, will walk us through this minefield.
Recently, when, when council had approved preliminary, the project design for the Lower Pacific Cove parking lot, we, it gave us the option of being able to refinance the existing debt as tax-exempt. Currently, we pay $193,000 annually with a 5.14% interest rate. If we refinance at 3.95%, which is the tax-exempt rate, our annual payments would drop to $174,000, which is $18,000 below what it currently is. When council previously discussed options for the Lower Pacific Cove parking lot, one of the options was to try to use savings from tax-exempt debt of approximately $20,000 to help offset the cost of the new debt. And if we move forward with this 3.95% financing, we can pretty much achieve that goal. Another option that we have with a 3.95% financing is to also refine, just to also finance the Lower Pacific Cove parking lot project, which is $1 million. Currently, we're in the process of applying for an I-Bank loan, where rates range from, currently range from 2.2 to 2.625 fixed for 20 to 30 years, which is considerably better than 3.95% rate. If we also wanted to refinance that debt at this time, we could. However, right now, our discussions with the I-Bank seem to be that we are, that we are on the way to approval. We have to work on some items with the, with the pipe failure area and, and the floodplain. And so, we can choose to go on with just this $18,000 refinancing. We can choose also just to hold with a 5.14% rate, and we can, and we can just wait and refinance after the penalty expires. There is a penalty of about $118,000 if we refinance with someone other than Santa Cruz County Bank. We reviewed the rate that Santa Cruz County Bank has offered with a financial advisor to see if it's reasonable, and also looked at some other municipal debt, and it seems to be a reasonable rate that they're offering us right now.
Can you tell us, is, is, will this window close? If we waited a month or two for some definite I-Bank response, will we lose this rate? Or do we just not know, or?
We would lose this rate. This rate expires September 30th, so to take advantage of the 3.95% rate, we, we would need to do it now. It would be taking an interest rate risk. Do you, do we want to wait and see how that plays out? Or do we want to go ahead and take advantage of this now?
And interest rates just recently declined once again, so we might even come out at better than 3.95.
We could.
Counsel, questions of staff?
I do, Mike.
Dennis?
I'm a little, I'm a little confused on whether you're including the million dollars in this loan or not. Are you including it in this loan or not?
Not on the, not on the projected amount. That is just strictly the refinancing piece. If we were to do the, do the other loan along with this package for 3.95%, the payments would increase by about $9,000 a year, or about $84,000 over the term of the 10 years. However, the difference with the I-Bank loan is that it is fixed for the 20 to 30-year period, whereas with the loan with Santa Cruz County Bank, after 10 years, there's a reset. And the reset currently is at the treasury bill plus 3%. With the 3.95% financing, it would be the treasury bill plus 2.5%.
Would the I-Bank have a problem with the fact that the million dollars is for a project that hasn't been approved?
They, we have submitted the project description, we're in the preliminary phase.
But we haven't approved this, the city, we haven't gone through coastal hearings, there's no approval by this body at all.
We have indicated that this is in the preliminary process. When we get further down to the final application, then we would need to, then we would need to firm it up. Right now, they have a preliminary process which takes about three months, and then it goes on to the final application. So right now, we're kind of getting the feel to if we can just even qualify for this particular type of loan.
Okay, thank you.
Kirby, you had a question?
Well, I just had a question for counsel. I'm a stockholder in Santa Cruz County Bank, should I be here?
No, you should not.
I should not be here? Okay, I'm not here.
Sam, are you here?
I believe I'm here.
Okay, good.
On the chart that was presented by staff, because I guess I wanted to be clear, because it doesn't show the 2.4 million being refinanced to the I-Bank.
We can't.
There's a penalty, I heard that, right? Is that why it's not being?
They won't finance it.
They, they won't refinance any existing debt.
They won't?
Right.
So that's not an option for us?
So yes, our, our only options would be is to maintain the existing debt or refinance the existing debt, and choose how we would like to do the new debt.
Okay, so, and, and whether, if we defer now, it's just a matter of the market risk.
Absolutely.
But with the Federal Reserve entering into a third phase of their quantitative easing, isn't it more likely that that plays into our favor? And that rates are more likely either going to hold or even go down lower? And then until we get more definitive information from the I-Bank about, you know, the additional million dollars?
It, it's difficult to say, just in, in looking at some of the rates, they've moved by like .25%. So we, we could wait, there isn't any, I mean, there is the risk of losing the 3.95, but yes, we could very well get a favorable rate.
Is staff recommending any that we act now?
We've discussed this internally, we've also discussed it with the financial advisor to just get some general information. Our recommendation was to proceed, but it's proceeding with caution, knowing that their interest rates could change. So it, it is something where we can go ahead and achieve the $18,000 that we've discussed previously with trying to offset the parking lot project. But at the same time, you know, there is, there is the chance that it can go down. So it's not, let's take advantage of this right now because it might go away. It is, it does, it does meet those goals, and we've also had the Finance Advisory Committee advise it to go along with this recommendation, too.
From what I've, after pressing staff a little this week, I've, I've heard them soften a little and say it's kind of a 60% recommendation. So I think it's, the coin is being tossed, and I'll open this up if anyone in the audience would like to speak to the council regarding this. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Personally, I don't, it's a great, well-done, you know, finding this $20,000 savings. I don't think we should rush to judgment for several reasons. We don't know what's happening, we don't have final approval on the parking lot, even though we did ask you to go forward and find us a financing option. We don't have a final determination by I-Bank. I think interest rates may very well go down, and if the I-Bank gives us a nod and say, yeah, if you approve the parking lot, we have the money for you, we can do this in 60 days. So my, you know, my personal inclination would be to wait on it, but I'll hear.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, I can't make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Okay, Kirby's not here, so all in favor? Aye, opposed? So moved, we're not going to do anything? Kirby, would you come back in?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now, for the fun part of the evening, our friends at the Art and Cultural Commission are recommending a new art project, and they'd like our conceptual approval before they bring back a design. Lisa Murphy, our staff person.
Okay. Well, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head there. This project is a proposed, it's in the conceptual phase, and so we're looking for your approval. The proposed project is at a cost of $10,000. It's paid for not from the general fund, but from our public art fund. And there is a budget of $20,000 that's currently there for unidentified projects. The kiosk is envisioned, a three-sided type of kiosk that's designed by an artist down in the Espinade. It would have an interpretive map on one side, it would have information from some of our local business partners, the Chamber, the BIA, across the city. It would have announcements of events and activities that are going on, because if you've been out to Twilight Concerts, what's coming, who's coming, who's playing, when's the Art and Wine Festival, all those types of things. And in conjunction with this, it's a good opportunity to replace the signs that are along the SoCal Creek that have the interpretive signs for the fish and so forth, and we'll incorporate the same design so that we'll have some consistency in tying those two areas together with the, with the signage that's already existing there, so.
Do we have, I'm the chair of the Art and Cultural Commission, as you know, and we've moved this one through. And can I have the picture of the, because I think it's Ashland that has something similar? Can we get it up?
You're asking me to put that up?
Yes. I don't think the city attorney's going to help you with this, you're on your own on this one.
I honestly, this is.
We've all, we all have it here, but just for the benefit of the audience and, and those at home watching, this is just one city's approach. It struck a chord with the Art and Cultural Commission, and it's.
Can you see that? Can you see it?
Make it a big screen. There we go, there we go. It's, you know, it's made by an artist, it's lattice forged metal, it's airy, there's places you can see through it. The decision by the Art and Cultural Commission was to use pre-manufactured outdoor poster cases to be incorporated in the artist's design, so the artist wouldn't have to reinvent something that's been invented already, which is a Plexiglas face with a key and a lock that opens up, like in a movie theater, that people from the city staff can open up and change whatever information is in them. It can be also used as the third method for announcing city meetings, which would save some staff time and effort and cost, not having to publish. So it would be a multipurpose, and we feel it would be a welcome addition in the village. Public Works Director Steve Jessberg and myself looked around, and to one side of the bench in the pickup area, there's a more than generous spot to put this, since it's about 36 inches on a side. And that's the report, counsel.
Interpretive map, Mike, explain that.
Well, the, the BIA has often talked about putting a map of Capitola Village with, you know, points of interest, the streets, where, and believe it or not, where's the beach, even though they're there. So it could be, and, and, you know, these things could come before council or come before staff and be approved. It wouldn't be a willy-nilly thing where anyone could post anything they wanted. And we think the Chamber would like a little section, certainly the Art and Cultural Commission would like to take a panel and tell people about future art projects and, and events, and anything else we can come up with.
Is the BIA willing to buy into this program?
As with money?
Yes.
Certainly not.
I would think.
We could rent them space, maybe?
Are we talking to someone that, meaning that it's, that it's electronic, or you could actually?
No, no, this is, this is paper stuff. This is, you, this is old school. You put a key in, you open up the glass, or plastic door, you put something in there with pushpins, you close it up, and you walk away.
Okay, so it's almost like a four-sided bulletin board?
It's a three-sided bulletin board.
Three-sided.
It's a triangle.
Okay.
If you look closely, this one's a triangle, too.
So what's in the middle? What's in the middle?
Air.
Is one side longer, is it, or is it a right triangle, or is it a?
Well, you know, I'm looking at it, maybe this, this one is a square, but we present, we propose a three-sided one because it'll take up less space, it'll be less obtrusive, and the overall height of this is like seven feet.
Okay. Is $10,000 enough to do this?
We feel that it is. We've done some research, and we checked with Ashland, and they made a pretty nice one for about seven.
Are you sure you don't need any more money? Because now's the time to?
Well, I think we asked for 20, didn't we?
Ten, we asked for 10.
10?
We have a budget of unallocated funds of 20 that are in the public art fund right now.
Right.
So.
10, yeah, we'll take it. Sam?
I like to support the recommendations of the Art and Cultural Commission, but, and, but the one question I had is, I know we had previously approved a major public art project on 41st Avenue. So we're confident there aren't going to be any cost overruns on that very significant project, and so, and we'll have enough money to complete that one in addition to spending the money on this one.
There's significantly more than just 20 in the art fund?
Oh, yes, I mean, that's just unallocated funds that are actually budgeted as an expenditure, but as the fund balance after the major art project that we have, it's about $150,000 that's in the fund.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please. I'd like to propose that we allocate $15,000 towards this project.
To include the River Project as well?
Yes.
Out of the public art.
The design, the design will come back to us.
Oh, yes, this is just, this is only conceptual, and.
Right.
The plan of the Art Cultural Commission is, on the recommendation of our community development director, because this is going to take up occupied space in the public easement, that we first get a conceptual idea from the council saying, yeah, this is a good project to go forward with. It will then go to the planning commission with a footprint on a map, so they give it the nod. We'll then form an art selection committee, which will pick an artist who will do a design, come back to this body to approve the final design.
That sounds good, great, thank you.
Kirby?
Seems a little retro to me. What is there going to be on this bulletin board that I wouldn't be able to find on my handheld device?
If, well, you know, nothing.
This will be more attractive than your handheld device.
You haven't seen his handheld device.
That's true.
Oftentimes, people don't have handheld devices that are keyed in right into Capitola's Twilight Concerts, and that's a very requested information of what...who's playing next week.
I have a motion.
Well, yeah, and I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Sam.
Anyone from the public? There's someone from the Art and Cultural Commission sitting in the audience, Kimberly Hogan, one of our commissioners. Would she like to say anything about this? I'm seeing no. Okay.
So under discussion?
Yes, please.
I'll support the motion, pending review of the final design, because I wouldn't vote for that one.
Well, the fact that it says Asheville on the top would not get my vote, first of all. And, you know, along with this, anytime we want to do an artistic, better cell coverage in the village, maybe those handheld devices would actually work down there. But all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So it goes, and we're at the end of the meeting, and are there any final council or staff communications? And I see Steve Jesperg running to the podium, our community...I'm sorry.
He's been chased by a police chief.
I know. Our Public Works Director, man of the hour and audio/video specialist. What's going on, Steve?
So at the last meeting, the council had asked for a report on the meeting we had with the residents of Somerville and Target. That meeting was held on August 2nd, and at that meeting, we talked about the signage at Target that is concerned of the residents there. I think we heard about that at the last council meeting. So I just thought I'd give us a recap of that meeting. At that meeting, there was probably 60 residents. Susan Westman and I attended it, along with Supervisor John Leopold, who had put it together. Most of the meeting was split in half. First part, we talked about the signage for the...for Target and how much it was shining into the neighborhoods. So Target, prior to the meeting, had agreed to install a diffuser on the two lights up on the tower. We have been told by Target that that has been installed, and they also agreed to install a timer so that the lights up on the tower, the lighted Target signs would go off within 30 minutes of closing. As my understanding, that those currently are going off approximately 10 o'clock, maybe a little later, depending on when Target actually closes that night. The other one they agreed to move was a Target sign on the parking structure that is on Capitola Road. Right now, it is located at the end of...let's see if I can get the street...Bulb Road, and they agreed to move it so you don't see it as you drive down Bulb Road. That work has not been completed. I think we put in an email today that it had been, but it will be...it is scheduled to be done on next Monday. So that's what we've addressed with the signage. Target is actively working to try and address those concerns. The other part of the meeting was talked about what we refer to as the hole in the wall, the path passes way through the wall between the mall and the Summerfield neighborhood. And I would say it was about 60, 40 people who wanted it closed, having a slight advantage over those who wanted to keep it open. We told the group there and Supervisor Leopold that it was basically put there as a condition of the mall project at the request of that neighborhood, of the county neighborhood. If the county neighborhood wanted to put together and petition the city to close it, we probably wouldn't object. It's really to their benefit to be able to access the mall without having to walk down to Capitola Road. Supervisor Leopold has agreed to kind of spearhead that and to make that determination and bring it to us. I think he's going to have a hard time coming to any consensus on that. It's really split between those who want to close and those who want it to remain open. Last I heard, they were actually looking at trying to clean up the other side of it. Right now, if you've ever been over there, it kind of looks like a back alley, and it acts like a back alley, and I've heard they're going to do some cleanup efforts and put some more lighting in there. So that was the August 2nd meeting. I think it went well. I think Supervisor Leopold did a good job. We had probably 100 people there. It was well-turned-out. And so, the other part of the Target, we've been hearing a lot of complaints about, is the noise there, and the police chief, there he is, has some information regarding that.
Thank you, Steve. Welcome, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the past eight days or so, we've been taking some decimal readings there at various times of the night, at three different locations, one at the loading dock, one at the sidewalk, and one at the wall adjacent to the Somerville residents, trying to get a better understanding of what the sound level is there. And we specifically were doing it on nights where there was a trailer that was being unloaded there. The trailer unloading reading at the dock was between 47 and 55 decimals, and peaked at 66, and the sidewalk and wall reading maintained between 46 and 52 decimals, which is a little bit lower when a car would go by on the street when the reading was done at the sidewalk. We've only had one complainant regarding noise. We have not received any complaints from the residents at the Dakota Apartments at all.
Any questions? Council?
No questions, no, thank you.
I have one, and so...
Yes?
So I just want to remind the public that the city of Capitola has 23 mobile home coaches for sale in the Pat Cove Mobile Home Park. The bids are due on October the 8th at 3:00 p.m., and you can find a full detailed listing on our website on the main page, or they could email me or contact me for more information.
And that was the city's personal mobile home salesperson, Lisa Murphy. If she can't make a deal, she'll eat a bug.
Can I park one in my driveway?
Sure.
No, we have one.
Hey, wait, you live next door to me. No, you can't park one in your driveway, okay?
Mike, go ahead, Rudy, answer.
Chief, if you had a question.
Yeah, no, I just want to compliment our police chief, our Public Works Director, and our mayor for an excellent job done on Reposa Avenue. We have some very satisfied public over there, and again, Rudy comes about office, the most popular man in town.
One more thing to add regarding the domestic violence, or the self...the classes for self-defense for women. We've actually applied for some grant funding to help pay for the instructor costs, and it appears that PG&E will be offering us a grant to help those costs.
That's wonderful, and we've also reduced our recreation fees for it. We have made it fully affordable and something that we recommend any woman take. That's it? Okay, Capitola, remember, make this town the world you want to live in. Be nice to each other. Good night.